I'm here tonight to provide you education and information so that your families can have informed information so that you guys can educate your children and be safe regarding golf carts and any kind of recreational vehicle. So each month I come and I attend the meetings, the monthly meetings with the Board of Directors and the community. And oftentimes, I am the face of law enforcement at these meetings. And a lot of questions are presented to me regarding traffic concerns, golf carts, recreational vehicles, things of that nature. So naturally, I want to try to answer those questions. I work really closely with the town and the board because I think we all share a common goal. One of the most important is safety. So again, that was my goal and my mission here tonight is to provide you with that information. So before I continue, I'd like to clarify the role of the California Highway Patrol. While CHP is integral to our community, we request that calls related to routine traffic or parking issues be directed to the appropriate local agencies. This helps us allocate our resources more efficiently to areas where we can provide the most effective assistance. I'd also like to introduce Deputy Chief of Staff Stephen Griswold, who's here tonight representing Supervisor Diane Burgess's office.
I think I know most folks here. So as Lieutenant said, my name is Stephen Griswold. I am Supervisor Burgess's Deputy Chief of Staff. I cover a few communities for her, but Discovery Bay included. I'm here because our office also received some complaints and some correspondence about this issue. And so while this particular issue doesn't really fall into the lane for the Board of Supervisors, I wanted to make sure that I was here to show you that the supervisor hears those concerns as well. We work incredibly closely, both Lieutenant and I personally, but Sheriff Livingston and the supervisor as well. Great relationships with the town staff. And so just wanted to reiterate that we're here as a partner in this and that concerns you relay to us get relayed to the sheriff and vice versa. And so we're a team in all of these efforts. So glad to be here.
Thank you, Stephen. As you mentioned, we do work closely with one another. Oftentimes, issues or complaints that are brought to our attention don't necessarily fall within our purview. Sometimes we can help, sometimes we can't, but we always work to try to direct those complaints to where they need to go. So next, I would like to talk about the agenda for tonight's forum. And if you could, do you have the... All right, perfect, thank you. So hopefully, when you came in tonight, at the back table there, there was a packet that is about 10 pages long, Deputies Coy and Deputies Bryant, who are both of my resident Discovery Bay deputies. They worked diligently to compile a list of different types of vehicles, vehicle code violations that correspond with these type of vehicles, the different licensing requirements, and some other information related to enforcement. It is 10 pages long. It took a great deal of time to gather this information so that it was easy to disseminate tonight and hopefully easy to understand because there's a lot. From this information, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that outlines various types of recreational vehicles and their respective definitions as outlined under the California Vehicle Code. I will review these with you so you have a better understanding of what the different types of vehicles are and what category they may fall into. I will not read each violation on this 10-page printout because it is lengthy, as I said, but hopefully it's a quick reference that you can take with you, just to give you some insight on what kind of enforcement can be taken. Lastly, on the last two pages of this packet, you're going to see information regarding California Vehicle Code Sections 21115 and 21115.1. These sections pertain to jurisdictions who have elected to seek a resolution to grant certain permissions that apply to golf carts, the laws for golf carts. Oftentimes, there are vehicle code sections that are referenced and are exempt based on this resolution. However, I'd like to stress to you that the Town of Discovery Bay does not have a resolution on file. So any of the sections that are mentioned under these two vehicle code sections do not apply to this area. So I think a lot of times that causes confusion when people think that the Town of Discovery Bay is what's considered a golf cart community. Per the California Vehicle Code, it is not. Okay, so I can answer additional questions on that later, but just to kind of, I've seen some comments, I've monitored some comments on the Nextdoor feed, and these sections particularly were mentioned several times. But again, I just want to stress, they do not apply to this area. Then I will quickly summarize the requirements regarding golf carts and low-speed vehicles because, once again, there's a lot of requirements. And then at the conclusion of my presentation, I will allow the audience to ask any questions. At the back of the room, there were some forums that you could write your questions on. If you've completed those, just please raise your hand. We'll come around and grab those at the conclusion of this presentation. If there was any questions that you didn't get answered, we will do our best to answer those questions. And then once the live audience has had an opportunity to ask questions, any of the Zoom participants can ask some questions as well. And hopefully, by the time you leave here tonight, you leave informed and with some information. And then additionally, we did put together a flyer that just highlights some of those recreational vehicles, something quick and easy you can take with you. So please feel free to take some of those. And then lastly, we'll close with any final thoughts. Okay, so the first thing that I'm going to highlight or go over are the types of vehicles. Under California Vehicle Code Section 345, so for golf carts, which is the first highlighted item there, golf cart is a motor vehicle that meets the following requirements. A motor vehicle that's having less than three wheels, I'm sorry, having not less than three wheels in contact with the ground. It has a motor vehicle with an unladen weight of less than 1,300 pounds, which is designed to be operated at not more than 15 miles an hour. And it's designed to carry golf equipment and not more than two persons, including the driver. Does require Class C driver's license on any streets. I'm going to talk a little bit more about golf carts here in a minute because I imagine a lot of you have questions about those. So just hang on to that thought for just a moment for me. Now, low-speed vehicles under California Vehicle Code 385.5 is similar. And as you can see there, there's a picture depicting a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle, or what we call LSV. Oftentimes, those two look very similar, if you can agree. So differentiating the two is critical. So under California Vehicle Code, an LSV has four wheels, can attain a speed in one mile or more than 20 miles an hour, but not more than 25, on paved level surface, and has a gross vehicle weight rating of less than 3,000 pounds. So you'll see on the handout that I prepared for you that low-speed vehicle is exempt under the 2115 sections, but once again, those don't apply to us. Motorcycle, under California Vehicle Code Section 400, I think we all know what a motorcycle is defined as, I won't talk about that. It's a two-wheel vehicle regarding it requires an M1 endorsement. And then you have a moped or motorized bicycle. So under California Vehicle Code Section 406, a moped or motorized bicycle is any two- or three-wheeled device having fully operational pedals for propulsion by human power or having no pedals if powered solely by electrical energy, has an automatic transmission, and a motor which produces less than four gross brake horsepower, capable of propelling the device at a maximum speed of not more than 30 miles an hour on level ground. You do have to have an M1 or M2, and a DOT compliant helmet is required. All right, if you can go to the next one for me? So before I do that, I actually want to, I brought something with me to cover just All right, so just to quickly reiterate the golf carts and the LSVs, because I think a lot of people have a lot of questions about those. So golf carts. The easiest way for me to describe golf carts to you is that the golf cart to be on city streets must be registered by the California DMV. It must have a visible license plate. It has to be registered, insured, and the driver has to be licensed. It can only carry two passengers, that includes the driver. And, this might shock you because it shocked me, everyone riding on the golf cart must wear a helmet because it falls under the same requirements for safety as motorcycles, which makes kind of sense. LSV, same thing. Those vehicles, basically, the only difference is the weight of vehicle and the speeds in which they can travel. So once again, they must be registered, you must be licensed, and you must wear a helmet. Okay?
Do you think it requires a license for a motorcycle?
No, it does not. It does not require an M1 or M2 license.
But the license plate?
It has to be registered.
There's no license plate, just registered?
You have to display a license plate. Yeah, if it's registered through the Department of Motor Vehicles, they're going to issue a license plate, and then it has to be affixed to the golf cart. So it has to meet the same safety equipment requirements as a car.
That would be front and back, still or not single?
Hold that thought. So if you have a question, if you could fill out the card, and then that way we can kind of breeze through this, and then we can come back to any questions. A lot of great questions, though, I appreciate that. All right, so next is a motorized scooter. As you can see here, a motorized scooter is any two-wheel device. Maximum speed is 15 miles an hour for these. They can be driven on bike paths, trails, or bikeways, and no greater than 25 miles an hour. You do have to have a Class C driver's license or permit to operate that. Pocket bikes, mini motorcycles, I think you guys are familiar with what those are. They're very small motorcycles, that's probably one of the common things we see. Again, those are not street legal, plain and simple. And then lastly, off-highway motorcycle, so those are your dirt bikes. If they have a license plate, there's a good chance that they are legally registered and are street legal. So again, there are certain requirements for those.
And you must have that M1 license.
Correct. So those fall under the same category as, like, motorcycles. Okay, next slide. Again, if you have any questions, if you could just write them down, and we'll go through them. All right, electric bikes or e-bikes. So there are basically three different classes of e-bikes. All are street legal. The only difference is, is on a Class III, it's going to have a speedometer that reaches speeds of 20 miles an hour. So really, the only way for us to differentiate between a Class I, Class II, and a Class III is by stopping that individual, inspecting the bicycle to determine which class the bicycle falls under. And it's, basically, the bikes are no more than 750 watts. So there are actually some e-dirt bikes that fall within this category. But again, they still have to be, follow the rules of the road for bicycles, wear helmets, stay to the right side of the road, things like that. So a person that's riding an electrical bicycle is subject to the same provisions as the person riding a bicycle, which is what I just covered, as far as the basic rules of the road. Must be 16 or older to ride the Class III. So that's the only difference between the three classes of e-bikes. You have to be 16 for the Class III. All the other ones, anyone can ride them. Anyone under the age of 18 must wear a helmet, and then obviously, it's unlawful to operate under the influence. All right, so some helpful public resources. The California Department of Motor Vehicles. DMV has a wide variety of materials, handouts, booklets. All of them are available either in person at your local office or online. It is your responsibility as a licensed driver to know the laws that are in the handbooks. The California Highway Patrol actually has a lot of very helpful information as well as far as the different types of, you know, golf cart laws and e-bikes and things like that. And there's some training videos on their website as well. And then lastly, the internet. Everything that was provided to you tonight is what we call open source information. So all of this information is available online to anyone just doing the research. I just put everything together in a manner that hopefully was easy to find and less confusing than the internet. All right, so what could happen if you violate one of these laws? So here are some of the consequences. If you are underage and you are cited, so if you do not have a license, which is 12,500 of the vehicle code, or you have a suspended license already, which is 14,601 of the vehicle code, and you are cited for driving under these conditions, your license could be suspended or revoked even further. And if you're a minor, when you try to go get your license at the age of 16, they won't give it to you. Obviously, your recreational vehicle could be impounded, and the towing fees and daily storage fees are quite significant. And then lastly, some financial responsibilities that you could incur. So as the parent of a child that's operating one of these vehicles, you could be held financially responsible. Obviously, I don't want to see anybody get into an accident, but as a parent, you could be responsible for your child for that. In addition to, you could be cited for allowing your child to operate a vehicle on the roadways. So there are a lot of ramifications as a parent if you're allowing your child to drive these vehicles. So we certainly don't want to see that. And obviously, the civil component to that, civil liability. At this time, that's all I have for the presentation part. If you guys have any questions that you have filled out, if you could hand those to Deputy Bryant, he will come around and gather those from you. Again, hopefully, I was able to put this information in context that was easy to understand This out of curiosity, while he gathers those for a show of hands, how many people here tonight have either a golf cart or one of these? Okay, so I imagine those of you that came are, were... Well, having that said, oftentimes, you know, that's what draws extra attention. I did see some comments, the sheriff's office was here to ban golf carts, we are not here to ban anything. They were never street legal to begin with, as you can see. These laws were set in place by the state of California, the DMV, not Contra Costa County and/or the sheriff's office. So please know that, again, I'm just here to provide this information so you guys can make informed decisions, keep your children safe. I certainly would not be, want to, as a driver myself, would not want to collide with one of these children. That would be awful. So, you know, hopefully, we can, if you guys leave tonight and just take a little bit of information with you, or educate your friends or your neighbors, and we impact just one family, I think that would be worth...
I don't necessarily want to write this down. Why, since this community's been here since forever, and the golf course has been here since forever, why now?
Is your question, "Why now?", the complaint?
No, why now is this suddenly becoming...
So I imagine, and somebody from the board could probably help me out with this, but I imagine this has been an issue for quite some time. The complaints continue, and they've increased. So I was asked to come here to try to help educate, and that's what I'm here to do. So I imagine this has been a longstanding problem.
If this is not a change of the law, this is just going over quite as a bit.
Correct, thank you, Carolyn. So just to reiterate, there has been no changes to the laws. Nothing has been added, nothing has been amended. This has been in place, I don't mean each of the laws carry different effective dates, but these laws have been in place for quite some time. So nothing has changed.
And probably that's what gives it the best test. Generally, energy, as opposed to, you know, five years ago, nobody talked about it except just in small groups, neighbors talking about kids. It's now created a more focused type of... And it's not the golf carts that are the problem. The golf carts had a little bit of heart to the problem, but it's not the golf carts. Has nothing to do with golf carts. Most people who drive golf carts around here go to golf courses or go to people's houses. That's pretty much, there's kids around running around, but generally, that's not the problem. The problem is the worst.
I do believe, and thank you for your thoughts, I do appreciate that, I think it's a combination. I think the e-bikes and the dirt bikes are probably more visible or more noticeable. But I do believe there's also an issue with the golf carts with juveniles riding on them and misbehaving. And that, again, that brings unnecessary attention. I'm not advocating that anyone who is just driving to and from the golf course, because that's obviously based on what I just covered with you, is not legal either. So, you know, correct, so...
...level, because it's going to take two, and what is it going to do? Try to... Work with the community itself. So is, you know, am I going to be going down and then say, "Hey, were my in the handrail on everybody?", or are we looking at kids? I mean, it opens up a whole range, and it's...
Obviously, they can't say that they're not going to enforce it, right?
I'm not asking them to pick and choose, I'm just, it's food for thought, right?
Absolutely.
You guys take it back, do your morning huddles, do everything else, right?
So great question, thank you so much. So there's a couple of things I'd like to add to your comment. So first of all, Supervisor Burgess's office and myself are here tonight because we do want to hear your concerns. Brian, did you have something to add?
Let's say maybe, give it a quick...
Yeah, we will, thank you. Deputy Bryant, while he comes up there with the questions, so to answer your question, we have been contacting juveniles who have been violating these laws. We have been making contact with their parents. You know, again, we have to start with education. I would hope that parents know what their children are doing, but sometimes that's not the case. And if they understand that their children are out doing these things, then maybe some of the enforcement can start right at home. Go ahead.
I have a lot of questions. The first one I'm going to go over is, I have seen deputies talking to kids on motorbikes in the afternoon, and then the next day, the same kids are back on the same bikes, no consequence. And that's one of the things my lieutenant was saying, that we have made contact, the first step is make contact with all the kids, identify her, because it may not be the same kids. So the first step we did, we have made contact with the juveniles that's on a dirt bike. The next step, we contacted their legal guardian, and we have been documenting all the information. That way, it's not the same kid the next time, the next day. So it may, you may think it's the same kid. We have a list of all the kids we've been contacting, and that goes from different spots, from Quinell Park, to Clipper, to Newport, and Discovery Bay Boulevard. Next question I have is, why is there no enforcement on parking codes for RVs, boats, trailers, et cetera? Why there's no fines, et cetera, for code enforcement? That question, obviously, that question, we have, we have our officers kind of dedicated for community regarding parking. At the same note, any deputy can enforce parking, so that's been addressed. How can we get more speed patrol on Clipper and Newport Drive? The first thing I would do is route that to CHP, that's state traffic, that's state property. But on that same note, we have been increasing our patrol on Clipper with radar and lightar on Clipper in Newport and Discovery Bay.
I was told that sheriffs aren't, you're not giving a ticket for speeding.
That is not true. I just...
Let me address that real quick. So as I mentioned before, you have two different law enforcement agencies who have two different missions. California Highway Patrol, their mission is traffic. Ours is property crimes, person crimes, and other things. Not all deputy sheriffs are trained to enforce traffic laws such as speeding because they haven't been to radar, lightar school. Whereas CHP, that's part of their program. So I do have two deputies that have attended that school, but not all of my deputies. So hopefully, that answers your question. So not across the board, unless deputies are assigned to what's called a contract city, so currently, it's Aranda, Danville, and Lafayette, they haven't received that additional traffic training.
Is there a process to get CHP out here? Because I've never seen a big call that they don't, it goes in a black line. It's like a circle.
You know, there's one highway patrol that patrols from Pittsburgh to the top of basketball, one highway patrol, it's every day as well. So that's why we don't get the patrols from the highway. Once in a while, you'll see an officer on Clipper Drive, they'll be out there patrolling the city park. Generally, they do in the afternoon, people aren't speeding through there, so it seems like that's the time that they're there. Yeah.
So unfortunately, we can't speak on behalf of the Highway Patrol and their take-on enforcement. But again, that's why we're here, because we do genuinely care about the community in which we serve. And we, even though we have limited resources as well, we're doing everything we can to help augment CHP and what they can do with their staffing levels, so...
And Lieutenant, if I could just, on that point, you know, one asset to the community is our state, you know, folks, they have local staff, kind of like myself, that cover this area. If anyone's interested in their contact, I have that, I can give that to you. The more folks that reach out to our state assembly member or our state senator and say, "Hey, we would like to see some increased CHP presence here in the community," that's strictly within their play. They can go direct to CHP in Sacramento through their legislative channels that they have, and they get that feedback to CHP, trying to get more, you know, highway patrolmen out here. So if you're interested, I have that contact. Great.
All right, the next question is, what are the hours of operations for the sheriff office here at Discovery Bay? I guess that's regarding the annex over here. It's the sheriff office, we 24 hours. We don't use that, we mostly typically use that location to write reports or use a restroom. We are not spending our whole 24 hours just sitting in the station. So if you have emergency or non-emergency, just call the dispatch number. If anyone wants to write it down, 925-646-24441, that's the best way. Or you can call the non-dispatch number and ask for the resident deputy in Discovery Bay if you got a concern or question. You guys for myself, Deputy Bryant or Deputy Coy?
Maybe if you tell everybody how the deputy residents work. You have two deputy residents, maybe a lot of people know. I think that's more with...
Okay. So there are two deputies assigned to Discovery Bay as in the resident deputies. That does not pertain to the Delta Station, that's separate. You have, like I say, you have two deputies assigned to Discovery Bay, like myself, Deputy Bryant, and Deputy Coy. So like, we usually handle all complaints or concerns regarding the Town of Discovery Bay. That's the best weapons, I explain that to you.
One of the questions I have here, is there anything in the vehicle code that a vehicle has to be registered when on a public street and have the proper signals and whatnot regarding insurance? So I think this is kind of a blanket question, but I think the blanket answer would be yes. Anything that's on the public road that's being operated needs to be registered, it needs to be what's considered street legal. Proper signals, again, there's a section for vehicle lighting and equipment that that would fall under. And then obviously, if you're going to be operating it, you have to have insurance.
2441. 41. Yes.
Correct.
Golf course?
Yes. That's okay, just wanted to clarify.
I'm just going through some of these questions because some of them have already been answered.
Should be.
Under 16, 16 and under, in a golf cart or everyone?
According to the California Vehicle Code, it states everyone. In fact, I'll plant while he's looking up. Again, these are not our rules. I actually thought it was interesting when I came.
I think this question pertains to the town of Discovery Bay. The question is, can we build a skate section at the existing park? Can we revamp Cornell Park and maybe add like a shade structure? So there's a sense for the Cornell Park, maybe. What are, what are the laws regarding children on golf carts and low speed vehicles? I'm pretty sure they answered all that in the past. Leave it blank.
Okay, and to answer the helmet question, California Vehicle Code Section 27-803 Parent C states in part, helmets must be worn by the driver and passengers. Correct, and the reason for that is, is because an e-bike is considered a bicycle, whereas a golf cart is considered more under the category of a vehicle. Or I'm sorry, as a motorcycle. That's a great question, thank you. So at the back, like I said, the last two sections. Under the California State and Highway Code Section 1950 to 1961, if a town decides as a town collectively that they want to pass a resolution to become a golf cart community, there's a process that they have to go through the county to adopt that resolution. There are a list of sections that you'll find. We didn't break them down, but they're, basically, it makes golf carts exempt from registration, but you still have to be, if I remember correctly, you still have to be licensed to drive. So, and same with low speed vehicles as well, exempt from registration. But there are other rules in place still that apply even if a town has a resolution, whereas like the golf carts can only be driven on streets that are no more than 25 miles an hour. So for example, anything up and down Discovery Bay Boulevard would be, you know, out of the question irregardless of if a resolution was in place or not. So there are still some restrictions, but the restrictions are, you know, a little less restrictive, if you will. However, I would say that this community, and I speak because I'm East County born and raised, this community is not the same as it was like in the 80s when Discovery Bay was first. Well, it started, but I mean, it started to really blossom in the 80s. And the amount of traffic we have, I just would like to leave you kind of with a thought that, you know, if your child was operating a golf cart or even yourselves, can you withstand the force from a vehicle that strikes you at 25, 35, 40 miles an hour? That's a lot of force. Now, I have not been to traffic basic school, actually, I have, take that back. I have not gone to advanced traffic schools, but the amount of force, I mean, it wouldn't take much to cause serious harm, and we don't, we don't want to see that. And again, I can't speak for the town and what their desires are maybe for the future. This is something I'm sure that they could have discussions about. I just, it's just more of a safety concern than anything.
I was just, it's sort of about the legality.
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you.
Why Stephen is still here? Stephen, since we are an unincorporated Contra Costa County, they talked about the town having a resolution. That would mean for us, the county, have your resolution. So we would need to work with the county, just so everyone knows, that's not anything. We can support it or not support it, but the county would be the one to decide on.
Yeah, if I, correct, yeah, the county board of supervisors as a whole would have to pass a resolution. They would explore that option. Not sure exactly what that process looks like. It's not something that we looked at before. But if there's some interest, I would say contact. About that, but yes, if we go to the board.
I believe the only area in Contra Costa County that has something similar in place is in the town of Alamo. And I know that the, again, it's the way that the city streets there are structured are much different. You know, there's a lot of gated communities. You know, here we do have the Discovery Bay Country Club, which is all gated and that's private property. So it's kind of separate entity anyway. But yeah, there's not, there's not areas.
But these rules do not apply to the Discovery Bay Country Club?
That's private, we don't have any, we don't have any jurisdiction over private properties.
Lieutenant, a clarification, that I just, what I haven't heard yet is, so what is the position of the sheriff's office, given the fact that if golf carts are illegal, then what's the sheriff's office's position on that being operated on the streets here?
So that's a good question. So it basically would be a case by case scenario if we do conduct a traffic enforcement stop on any of these vehicles. As you can see, that's in this packet, these are the laws that we can enforce. We have the ability to enforce those laws, whether it be by citation or impounding the vehicle. Does that answer your question?
Just trying to make clarity, what the sheriff's office are planning on dealing with in forward, if they're going to enforce the rules that are on the books, or not?
Thank you, this just gives, this is just outlining what we.
She can figure herself, but thank you.
Thank you, that's okay. This just tells, this just provides you information on what we can enforce. Okay, these are the laws that are on the books that we can enforce, yes.
Going along with your golf carts, how many injuries have you heard here this last year? Deaths and or injuries?
There is none that I'm aware of. I know there was a serious injury, but I believe it was before last year. And that sounds like, it was a couple of years ago. And from what I understand about that particular isolated incident, was it was a very tragic accident. I've been here since January of last year and I'm not aware of any incidents. I do believe it was before that. But nonetheless, I mean, irregardless, it was, it was a tragic accident. And. Yes, sir.
Several times on Clipper, here on the public lawns, or I should say the cities' lawns, and all the new landscape along Clipper, there's been a lot of kids riding their dirt bikes through the new. And there, I had to go over here and get one of the city guys behind over here. He came over and they already had the lawns torn up between the trees over here and we're going into the empty lot. Is there any enforcement or something that the city can do? I'm talking about city, whether it be a manager or something like that to.
So I'm the general manager here, and we're a community services district. So we are water, wastewater, and a little bit of parks and recreation. That's all that LAFCO gave us to do. So I have no jurisdiction over, over that kind of thing. So we typically call either supervisor's office or the sheriff's department or CHP for any incident like that.
Yeah, we just refer to the town's property.
Yeah.
It's been relandsted.
I know, and so, yep, as soon as we see that, we try to identify who the kid is or, or person, either or. And we do make a report with the sheriff's department. So any vandalism in our parks, we take pictures and we send it straight to the sheriff's department. So we do take note of it all. If we see it, we do try to say, that's enough, please leave. That's the best that we can do with our jurisdiction, so, so that you're aware.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I've heard something about, you guys have, you see the kids when they're racing up and down? That enough for you to go back to the parents to see the same kid? Somehow getting out of the house?
Right.
If we did that, is that enough for you or do you actually need to see it?
So that's a great question, thank you. Yes, we do actually have to observe it before we can take any enforcement action. However, like Deputy Bryant mentioned earlier, we have received a lot of information from community members such as yourself. And we do make every attempt to identify those individuals and go, like I said, if nothing else, use it as a teaching opportunity or education to go try to educate. They've been keeping diligent notes on, on the juveniles that they've made contact with and their respective parents. Again, not because we're trying to use that against them, but at the same time, it does help us kind of create historical record of, hey, you've been contacted before, you know, and then we may need to take extra steps on enforcing their behavior. So again, we are taking those steps if we do get information. And like I said, my deputies have been out here working hard trying to identify them and we don't want to see anything happen to any of these kids. I know they're just trying to have fun, but. Right, and we don't want to see that.
Speed on Clippers, gotta be, I'm not speed expert, but it'd be anywhere from 25 to 20.
Okay, what I would like to do at this time, because I do, we do have some participants that are joining us via Zoom, and I would like to see if they have any questions that have not already been asked and answered because it could be something you hadn't thought of that maybe we can address to the group. Okay, all right, fantastic. Again, I would like to thank you guys for taking the time out of your evening to come down and listen to the information that I had to share with you. Again, I hope that if nothing else, you can take the message back and help educate, even if it's just one family, to make better decisions so that we don't see, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I've been doing this for a really long time and dealing with tragedy in the community is, is the worst. So again, thank you. I do have some cards if you need to reach out to me at a later time.
I think it'd be a great idea to put this on the website.
We can do that. We've also recorded this as well, so once we give it to the sheriff's department and they edit it as they please, we're going to put that on our, on our website as well, so.
And then before we go, did you have anything, Stephen, you'd like to add?
A few minutes, I have a order that got some business cards on me as well, so if anybody needs anything from my office, see me, you float around, thank you guys. Thank you very much. Hang on, you guys, so one moment, I'd like just to say one thing. I grew up in a little small town like this in Puckham in New Jersey. Our chief of police knew exactly where I was. I got my dirt bike taken away a couple of times, you know what? They're kids, let's not forget that, okay? They're just kids. They're not out there trying to be criminals. Just, just, let me just say this, if they were, so was I. Okay, we're all grown up in that same era. Let's try to make sure that we take care of our community and help be a community for these kids.